I think that clock might be a minute slow, so we'll look at the bill's watch here. So it's 6:30 and I'm going to call the January 15th. This is the 15th, isn't it?
Yes, it is.
Meeting of the public planning board to order. It's our regular meeting. And I'll start with the roll call of the members present. Present this evening, Mr. John Kelly, Selectmen's Representative, Bill Hul, alternate Jack Scarborough, alternate Rhonda Bishop, alternate Brett Sefkoff, and the Chair Fred Dool. We know that John Kruegerberg and John Ramlett will not be present. And for the record, Dave Switzer has submitted his resignation to the Board of Selectmen and has been accepted. And so we will sorely miss his talent on this board. And I'm sure he'll be thoroughly recognized by the boards when the appropriate time comes. I do expect Mr. Aghern to arrive and we'll acknowledge his arrival when it happens. We'll now move to the item three on our agenda, the adoption of our minutes of our work session meeting on the 8th of January. There's a copy of those minutes in front of each of you. The same drill as before. We'll go through it page by page. If you see any revisions or errors signify that and I'll recognize you and we'll correct that.
Mr. Chair, did you want to appoint some of the alternates to...
Yes, thank you very much, Maryam. My vice chair wasn't here to kick me in the shins. Yeah. I'm going to appoint Jack Scarborough to serve for John Kruegerberg. I will appoint Rhonda to serve for John Ramlett. And to fill our empty seat of Mr. Switzer, I will appoint Brett Sefkoff, your all-voting members this evening. And we're still hoping that Mr. Aghern shows up. But we now have a quorum plus one. Thank you, Maryam. All right. Go back to the minutes. Page one.
And I passed out at everyone's desk, it should say, "Draft 01-15-09," because that has the most recent changes.
Right. That's the only we've got. I'll have to comment that the font seems to be getting smaller and smaller.
More and more. I can increase it. The one reason why she put the smaller was when I had a report, she made a different font size for my report.
Okay. Bye, folks.
Okay, okay. I'll increase the size.
Page five.
Excuse me?
Yes.
Can we go back to, um, four?
Page four, we're back to page four. What happened?
Um, on the first bullet there, words, in the case of Spader, how many of that is his vocal? It's not vocal.
The first bullet being clarified or...
That's correct.
What should it say?
Underneath "missed," it should be vocal.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you. But he was also vocal.
A vocal restaurant.
A vocal voice. Thank you, Rhonda Bishop. Okay. We're back to page five now. And finally, page 12. Other than the one spelling noted by Rhonda, I'll look for a motion on the second of the minutes.
Someone?
Second. It's been moved by Mr. Hul, seconded by Mr. Kelly. All in favor accepting the minutes of the January 8th work session signify by saying aye. And unanimous, six ayes. Okay. Okay, moving along now to item four.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Yes.
I got distracted. Who made the motion and who seconded it?
Mr. Hul made the motion, seconded by Mr. Kelly. And the vote was unanimous. All right. Item four on our agenda, public comment. Anyone in the public would like to comment on something that isn't on the agenda, we'd be delighted to hear you. Seeing no public comment, I will move right to correspondence. Maryam, what correspondence this evening? Would you...
No, we have not had anything significant.
Really?
Slow mail day.
Good. Okay. Moving right along. We're going to go to number six, old business. And for the record, we've reassessed two of the public hearings at the January 8th meeting to this evening. And we're going to be reopening public hearings on both of them. But first, we'll take the tavern amendment. And Maryam, would you give us the preamble on that? And then I'll open the public hearing.
Yeah. What we were talking about doing is this was in response to the state government looking at allowing standalone taverns, which they haven't previously allowed. And their definition, currently, the liquor license is you have to sell more than 50% of gross receipts has to be in food in order for you to sell alcohol. But they're looking at what if you don't sell 50% of gross receipts in food, then they were looking at allowing that license, which currently they don't. So that's what we would define as a tavern. So we had a committee that met and we decided that we needed a definition in our zoning ordinance of what a bar, tavern, or nightclub was, because currently it's folded right into restaurant. So we went over this last week and we were talking about having it comply with the state code, which says that full-service restaurants with annual food sales of at least, currently it says $75,000, shall be exempt from the 50% requirement. Prior to that, it was $150,000. But when I was looking at this, I thought it would be better if we just left out the threshold and went back to our original, if more than 50% of establishment's gross receipts, and then we added this, I put this in underline, as determined by the state liquor commission are from the sale of alcoholic beverages, then the establishment will be considered a bar or tavern as opposed to a restaurant. And then I had our definition of restaurant. So I'm concerned about setting a threshold. There was the suggestion that I surveyed the local restaurant owners. But I think even with surveying the local restaurant owners, I don't want us to be accused of being arbitrary and capricious, because then it won't stand up in court. And if we don't tie it to the RSA, which currently is at 75,000, but there was concern that that might not be a high enough threshold, that we arbitrarily set it at 150. I just think it'd be better to go back to the original. The definition of restaurant, I'll read that again. It says, this is our existing definition, "A retail establishment where food and drink are prepared, served, and consumed primarily within the principal building. And where ordering and pickup of food takes place from a motor vehicle," because that would be our fast-food restaurant. Restaurants include, now presently, our zoning ordinance says taverns, that's what I want to take out, cafeterias, lunchrooms, fast-food restaurants without drive-through service, bars, nightclubs, that's also what we want to take out, and similar establishments. And then I was proposing to add, "And establishments that meet the definition of a restaurant is specified by RSA 175:1." And that's where they put back in that threshold. So we could tie it to that RSA of how the RSA defines restaurant. And then when our committee met, we decided that the bar, tavern, nightclub, meaning the definition of retail establishment that primarily engages in preparing and serving alcoholic beverages, so if their primary purpose is to serve alcoholic beverages, that would be a bar, tavern, nightclub. And at the request of the Chair, I put the table in here. This is not the complete table, but this just gives you the idea of how it would be situated. So this is section 304. It's got the use, it's got commercial, and then where it's told, that's where I would stick in, bar, tavern, nightclub. And then you can see that dash means not permitted. And then I, you know, I showed how restaurant is currently permitted in the agricultural zone, the village commercial, the highway commercial, and institutional, or, excuse me, that one, industrial commercial development district.
Okay.
So that shows how it would be, as a table.
We'll see how that goes over. I'm going to reopen the public hearing on the so-called tavern amendment ordinance. And I'll reopen that hearing at 6:41 PM. Public hearing is now open. Anybody who would like to speak in favor of this proposed ordinance change, please identify yourself and we'll be delighted to hear you. Yes, Charles?
Charlie Berman, on the Board of Selectmen. What is the final dollar value? Have you put a dollar value on it?
I thought if thus, we don't put a dollar value on it, because I'm not sure how that would stand up in court, but what I said is if more than 50% of establishment's gross receipts, as determined by the state liquor commission, are from the sale of alcoholic beverages, then the establishment will be considered a bar or tavern as opposed to a restaurant. And then when we put "as determined by the state liquor commission" because the state liquor commission has the threshold, so it would just be folded into verbs instead of us putting it in a term.
The threshold then would be 75,000.
Yeah, because that would just be "as determined by the state liquor commission." But we won't put it in our definition, because our definition would be a retail establishment that primarily engages in preparing and serving alcoholic beverages for on-premise consumption. So if we would look at a business and if their primary purpose is serving alcoholic beverages, then that would be a bar, tavern versus a restaurant whose primary purpose is to serve food.
Yeah. Our concern was to get the higher dollar values, because the 50% rule, I mean, you can do $75,000 of food and sell a lot more than 50% of your gross receipts would be alcohol, which would then qualify a restaurant as a tavern, a bar, I gather, under this definition. You're talking 75,000 is what, $3,000 a month. That's $100 a day in food. I mean, you can do that with sliced pizza out the window. Or if you had a higher threshold, which I think used to be, the state law used to say 150,000.
Right. Again, I'm just not going to talk about thresholds, because typically in zoning ordinances, we don't do thresholds based on gross receipts. It just doesn't...
Well, probably the threshold is you've got to have the ability to order it, and I don't have the time to get into that.
Correct, correct. So that's why we're just going to put it back in there at the state liquor commission. But when the person comes in, they have to identify themselves as a restaurant, meaning their primary purpose is to serve food, or no, their primary purpose is not to serve food. But keep in mind that today, there isn't anything allowed as a tavern because of the state.
Yeah.
Further comments, Charles?
No.
Would anybody else like to speak regarding this ordinance? Pearl O'Conne. Yes, sir.
Chuck Berman. Was the pool hall being added or taken out?
The...
Is the pool hall going to be primary alcohol?
Pool hall was proposed last week, but upon looking at it, I wanted to take that out too, because you can have a pool hall that doesn't serve any alcohol. So it didn't seem right to throw pool hall into something assuming it's going to serve alcohol. Again, the problem would be if its primary purpose is to serve alcohol and they happen to have a pool table, then we would say, you know what, you're not a pool hall, you are a tavern.
Well, the state has that license available.
Okay. And that's, I mean...
And you don't have to sell food.
And you don't have to sell food, right. But in the town of Plymouth, if somebody wants to establish a pool hall and they say our primary function is to have pool, recreation, indoor recreation, that's fine. If it turns out that their primary purpose really is to serve alcohol, then we would say you misrepresented yourself, you really are a bar, tavern. But we didn't want to not allow a pool hall, because what if they only serve non-alcoholic drinks, sodas or something?
So if they went to apply for a liquor license, you'd tell them no?
Well, we don't do liquor license anyhow, so that would have to go through the state. But it would go by what their primary function is. If they're primarily, they're a bar, but they just stuck a pool hall there, then no, that won't be permitted.
I was just asking, because that license is available through the state.
Right, right. But then we would define them as a bar if it appears that their primary purpose is really selling alcohol and not soft drinks.
Well, whether you're selling alcohol with a pool, what's your primary purpose then?
Then we would go to the state liquor commission and ask to look at their gross receipts and to be of that line.
I would kind of run under the state liquor commission when I require to sell food with a pool hall license. If there's no requirements at all, if you were labeled as a pool hall, a billiard license in the state of New Hampshire, the liquor commission rules do not require you to sell food.
Right, okay, right. So...
So would that be allowed and also...
Okay, again, if it's a pool hall and they decide they're not going to sell food, that's fine. If they're going to mainly sell soft drinks, that also would be fine. If it turns out that really, when you look at it, there's not a lot of pool going on, it's really they're selling alcoholic beverages, then we would say, you know what, you're a bar, tavern.
I would, you know, if either of these gentlemen who have a lot of expertise, if they think this is a seriously flawed ordinance, I'd like to hear that stated clearly, because I've got some discomfort there. We haven't shut the bar and door quite tight enough, but the hearing is still open. And if there's anyone else who'd like to speak? Yes, sir.
Uh, Brian Murphy. By adding language saying that any establishment like a pool hall would also have to offer food, in other words, they force them to open a restaurant as well if they chose to serve alcohol, at that point, they would be, they would have to hit the 50/50 under this proposed ordinance. So you might want to add in there that, you know, for the purposes of these definitions, you know, a standalone pool hall is not allowed to sell alcohol, but if it's also a restaurant, you know, if they offer food, which many of them do, and it wouldn't have to be, you know, sit-down dinners, but as long as they hit the threshold, it would still meet what we were trying to do here, as far as not having a standalone alcohol-only sale.
Mr. Miller.
It sounds, just listening to the discussion, if it appears that there is a state law authorizing a certain type of license for a pool hall that can serve liquor, so there's no food required on the premise. So if that's in fact a fact, then a town requiring someone to do food for them to get that license to do a business in town, I think something's, something's not quite correct here of us trying to fabricate some threshold on a state law that says that you can do a pool and serve drinks. So I'm not enough to know which the system is, but enough to say that I think there's an element of doubt here, so us trying to, you know, we're going to say we want to ban pool halls that serve liquor so that we comply with our tavern ordinance here. I don't know if that's going to stand up to a review.
Thank you, Frank. Further comments? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing at 6:50 and bring it back to the board for discussion. John?
Just a question, is can the town be more stringent on their zoning or whatever than what the state is as far as the liquor laws are concerned?
Correct, correct. The town can be more stringent.
So we could say that no liquor is allowed in a pool hall and it would be all right, even though the state said, that even though the state has a license saying that you can have a pool hall and just with liquor served without food or anything. So could you stop some of this discussion as far as that is concerned, as to say any place that is serving liquor has to have at least a 50/50 ratio and have it legal, make it more stringent than the state is?
Yeah, that's my understanding, that it could be more strict. Okay, so saying that the pool hall could not serve any alcohol or that it needs to meet the 50/50?
It would have to be 50/50.
Yeah, okay. Well, I, you know, I think we have that...
I got Phil to check.
Because if you're going to be a pool hall and you're not going to serve alcohol, you're going to mainly serve, you know, soft drinks and snacks, then you would just be allowed in our existing ordinance under indoor recreation. If you go over, if you're more than 50% of the establishment, then you're not really a pool hall, you're a tavern bar, so then it's not allowed. So I think we're okay. I just, I hesitate to say we're not going to allow pool halls or billiards or bowling or anything when we are a university town and maybe that, you know, it's possible someone wants to open one that does not sell alcohol.
The pool hall is not a concern, you know, it could be a swimming pool, it could be anything. Those things could be allowed in town of Plymouth, but if you put that 50/50 in there...
Right, right. And then we have the 50.
Then that caps everything else which...
Right, right, right. So when they go over the 50%, it's more than 50% in alcohol, then that's what we call a tavern, even though it has a pool table in there.
Okay. Bill?
Did the town council give a position on this?
No. I sent it to him right after our meeting and then I never got a response back and then I sent him another email. So either he's out of town or I just wasn't able to reach him.
Check. All I was going to add, in my past experience, is that any pool hall that I have been in has served alcohol. And that is from my age of 17 upward to current. I just, I don't see the argument necessarily. We've got pool halls, alcohol, it's going to be there, and there will also be food. They're going to serve french fries, they're going to serve onion rings, they're going to serve hamburgers. It's going to happen.
Mr. Chen? I'll go to Brian next, John. Rhonda, yes?
I just need to mention, I don't know if this is not appropriate or not, but it says if more than 50% of the establishment's gross receipts, should it be "or" or is parentheses taken over the word "or"? Or should they be...
No, no. If more than 50% of the establishment's gross receipts, and then in parentheses, "as determined by the state liquor commission," so that's where we're getting to the gross receipts.
Or, "as determined by the..."
Yeah. Are from the sale of alcoholic beverages, then the establishment will be considered a bar, tavern as opposed to a restaurant. So that's fine. And again, you know, reiterating the point of if the pool hall, if they're selling more than 50% of their gross receipts from the sale of alcoholic beverages, then our ordinance is defining them as a tavern, no matter what they call themselves. We're still calling them a tavern.
Okay. Back to you, John.
A couple of things. Have you passed it by the chief of police yet?
Yeah, the original, when we came up with this, this went through the police chief and it went through the attorney. The only thing that the police chief didn't see was what we added just last week, which was putting that threshold on.
Okay.
That the attorney hasn't seen and the police chief hasn't seen, and that's why I thought, you know what, it's best if we just remove the threshold. This one, what we have right here, has been approved by the attorney, approved by our whole tavern committee, which included the police chief.
Secondly, it's a comment, and that is, the town of Plymouth always has, seems to have the position of, we'll give them a little bit. And as time goes on, that crack keeps getting bigger and bigger. So if we allow pool halls now, then six months from now, we're going to allow something else, and then six months after that, we're going to allow some other type of institution to be able to just serve liquor. So I would assume that it would be just as well if you just said that if it's not 50/50, then you would be considered a tavern.
Right.
End of conversation.
Correct, right, right, right.
Bill, you got another comment?
We're sort of getting hung up on the pool hall business concept here. In terms of what we've got in front of us now, I frankly think it's sufficient to curb the issue that this was initially addressed for. When it comes to pool halls, they're a different kettle of fish altogether. And I can speak to this pretty specifically because my son owns the biggest billiard parlor in the northeast down in Connecticut. And the annual, the association, the amateur pool association hosts, he hosts most of their northeastern tournaments in his establishment. In terms of the receipts that they realize, they're threefold. Pool table charges, food sales, and liquor sales. And it's a different mix than what you're talking about in the context of how this cabin bar consideration is running. So you've got to look at the animal for what it is and deal with it for what it is. And I think that in terms of just zoning out the possibility of recreational facilities like a pool hall or a bowling alley or any of these other recreational facilities, which are attracted to an area where you are a college community because there's a lot of recreational interest in those centers, I think that would do ourselves a disservice. And I would, I would not get twisted around... And I would, I would not get twisted around the issue here of the pool hall versus what was fundamentally the purpose of what we've got crafted in front of us.
Thank you, Bill. Mr. Craig?
I think I agree with everything that's been said so far, but I think it's the wordiness that's opening up the option of a business that serves more than 50 percent liquor, no matter what the other 50 percent is. So I would be inclined to remove the as determined by the State Liquor Commission and the as-opposed-to-a-restaurant clause at the end, and leave it at, if more than 50 percent of the establishment's gross receipts are from the sale of alcoholic beverages, then the establishment will be considered a bar or tavern. If it's less than 50, then you're something else, whatever that is, it's up to you.
Our code enforcement expert, Mr. Speaker, has...
Mr. Chairman, the conversation has evolved. I don't know if the public hearing is closed.
It's closed.
Okay. Yeah, we're, the board's discussing, and we're going to move to a vote here shortly. The State Liquor Commission is the only determinant factor here. We do not track these businesses in town. So we have to leave that language in, otherwise we have no way of knowing.
Okay, there you go, break on that one.
Is, are we privy to the State Liquor Commission's numbers without that clause?
If we ask them.
So we could then establish through them?
But they enforce, is the problem. They, they do all the enforcement for the liquor laws in the state.
I think my concern is that I heard earlier that the threshold will then remain in the state's hands with that clause.
Correct, but by tying it to 50 percent here in town, that puts a more restrictive, regardless of any other number threshold, they still have to meet that under our ordinance.
Even if the state removes the threshold?
Correct.
That's what they're talking about, right?
Correct.
Okay, I have Jack.
What?
Okay. Barry, are you satisfied now with the logic?
Yeah, I'm satisfied.
There's no further board discussion? Did I hear?
No.
Then I'll, I'll look for a motion on passing this on with our endorsement to the town meeting.
Wait, let me ask them one thing.
Yes, go ahead.
First suggestion of opposed to a restaurant, I'm fine with that.
We, we, that's been withdrawn.
Oh, but actually, I'm, I'm fine with that. We could, we could cross out as opposed to a restaurant.
Without compromising the language, I hope my colleagues to pass on that, too.
I'd weigh against change at this point.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Bill. Okay, I'm still looking for a motion on this proposed ordinance.
I'll move the acceptance of this latest proposal on bar, cabin, nightclub to go forward for consideration by town meeting as a zoning amendment.
The motion's in favor of Mr. Hall, seconded by Mr. Scowdenrow, that we pass this motion on with our endorsement to town meeting. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous? Thank you.
Okay, I'm sorry, that was seconded by?
Seconded by Jack. Okay. Okay, we now have another recessed hearing that we're going to be hearing with, and this will be the accessory family dwelling, or the so-called mother-in-law apartment, whatever you want to call it. Again, Miriam, would you give us your preamble? I don't know what's changed since the last time.
Right.
We felt that we had to recess for further study.
What we changed since last time was, there was the discussion about, should we allow, can you have accessory family dwelling inside your single-family home? Should we also allow it in a detached facility? So let's say you had the single-family home, and then you had a detached garage, should we also allow it in a detached? And it was the consensus of the planning board not to allow it, that that would be complicating the issue, because then you're looking at, you know, two meters, and it'd make it more inviting to convert it over to a rental unit later on. So with that in mind, I amended it a little bit, and so our new definition is, accessory family dwelling is a second dwelling unit either within, or as an addition to, a single-family dwelling, or in an attached accessory structure on the same lot as the main dwelling. And what we meant by the attached accessory structure is sometimes you have your garage attached to your house, so that would be okay as long as it's attached, containing independent cooking, sanitary, and sleeping facilities. Such a use is an accessory use to the main dwelling. One of the dwellings is owner-occupied, and the other dwelling contains a related family member. See definition of family-related. I, I think that was the only change that I made.
All right, fine. Now, I'm going to, I'm going to be reopening the public hearing that was recessed on January 8th on the proposed accessory family dwelling amendment to our ordinance, and I'm reopening that hearing at 7:03 PM. Anyone wishing to speak in regard to the proposed ordinance regulating accessory family dwellings, identify yourself, and I'd be interested, consult with the board, and hear your thoughts.
Yes?
Mr. Chairman, looking at this with Miriam, and it seems that what we wanted to do, and the sense of the board was such that they didn't want it to appear to be two separate dwelling units on a lot. And there's a term in construction, they call it a fraud, which is a family room over the garage, which is oftentimes converted into that. And that's why, rather than take accessory dwelling, or accessory structures completely off the table, but to have them be attached to the house with a breezeway. And also, that's more in line with the idea of keeping a family member within the home, rather than having them across the yard.
Thank you for the clarification. Further comments? Seeing none, I'm ready to be closing the public hearing on the accessory family dwelling ordinance at 7:05 PM, and bring it back to the board for discussion and vote. John?
I would really like to see where it might say an existing attached building, because you could have a building and put another complete separate unit in it and have a catwalk to it, or could have almost anything to it, just to, to bypass the law of the ordinance, so that if there was a garage attached to the house, and you had storage up over the garage, and, and using the same electrical meters, and the same water, and the same storage, and everything like that, then that would be okay, but I just would be afraid that they're going to open the door when you say attached building, because they could do all the things.
We did, we did talk about that, but we didn't want to put existing, because we have had cases where it's new construction, the whole thing, the house and the garage, they're both new. And they want to put the accessory family dwelling from the get-go. So that's why we hesitated on the word existing.
If we could, if we could do something saying, oh, new construction, totally new construction, something like that.
Isn't the footprint what we're really worried about? Because I mean, I think there's one going on right now over on Smithbridge Row, where they're, they're, they're putting a second level on their attached two-story garage, and I believe it's going to be an in-law apartment.
Right.
Which is a very common thing.
But that attached garage is already there.
That would be, that would be okay in this language. Yeah, fine.
Yeah, but, but with this language, the way her language is, that you could have a house, and then you could build another building, say not a garage, but another building, and just attach it some way or other. So now you've got two buildings, and that one might enhance somebody thinking they might be able to rent things.
Jack?
I should shed any light on this? Not shed any light. Another example, though, would be the second story of the Tenny Mountain Country Store, which has been built over the existing structure, and is home of the owner.
But that was an existing building.
It was an existing building, but now it's gone from a store, commercial business, to a residential business.
But whether it's vertical or horizontal, doesn't make any difference. If you have a garage, you can add an apartment over it, or if you have a one-story building, add two stories over it, doesn't make any difference, it's still a pretty existing building that then they might show.
Miriam?
Okay, one thing, though, that I do want to point out is, remember, this accessory family dwelling is going to be a special exception in each case. So that means it goes before the zoning board adjustment, and they have to show the plan. So they'll look at it at that point and see if it makes sense or not makes sense. I'm, I'm hesitating to say existing, because a lot of times you want to put in addition to your house, and you might say, okay, I'd like to put the garage and then put, you know, the unit above the garage. I don't, I don't know if it's legitimate to, to not allow that option. And so we do have the protection of it's going to be a special exception, and we put a bunch of conditions on that special exception also. So I, I think we've got enough fences around it to make sure it's, it's going to be what we want it to be.
Okay, Bill, can I move that?
I'm comfortable with the changes that have been made, and I think in conjunction with neighborhoods that have covenants and restrictions, that between the two, the issue is reasonably well-covered.
All right, no further discussion. I will ask for a motion on, again, the board acting on this with their up or down relative to the law and act on the town meeting agenda.
Again, I'll move that we approve the dwelling accessory family zoning amendment proposal, to bring it to town meeting for consideration for a change to our zoning amendments.
Seconded by Mr. Kelly. Motion made by Mr. Hall. We're voting on board approval and endorsement of the accessory family dwelling amendment for town meeting work. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Unanimous? Six-four. Thank you. I'm remiss in not making an announcement, and under your new business agenda, we have had item two withdrawn for this evening, and proposed to move, we say table, to February 19th. They've requested to come back on February 19th. So you only have one item under your new business. Okay. And I'm going to move to number seven, new business, and that will be a site plan review and a public hearing. Are we, are we a public hearing as well?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Site plan review and public hearing of the proposed addition to the Star King Unitarian Universalist Church. We will first start with Miriam, and she will give us the overview of the planning department's take on this, and whether the application is complete or not. We'd like to hear from her.
Correct. Quentin Blaine is here, and he's representing Star King Unitarian Universalist Fellowship, and they're looking to construct an addition. It's going to be 2,238 square feet, and it's to the existing church, which is 2,261 square feet, and this is at 101 Piergounds Row. And we did look at the sketch last week, and he had, he addressed a lot of our concerns that we had. One was about exterior lighting, and he assured us that he would be dark sky compliant. One was about the drainage report waiver and the permeable park, permeable parking lot. And we discussed that, and we thought it would be in keeping with the character if he does not pay for parking lot, which is their plan. However, when I was talking with the engineer when we went out to the site, we feel that prior to him constructing that additional parking area, that they should run drainage calculations, and to then set up an engineering review escrow account at the time that they want to do the parking lot. Now, that's a phase two. They're, they're really just interested in the addition to the building, but they want to get approval for both. And so what I recommend is, I, I looked at the application, I've determined that it is complete. If the planning board determines that the application is complete in agreement with me, then I recommend acceptance of a site plan with all state, federal, and local approvals, but with the condition that prior to clearing in or construction of the proposed parking lot, which would be sort of a phase two, that the church shall submit drainage calculations, and also at that time, set up the engineering escrow account.
Okay.
And the planner before you.
Okay. The planner has determined that the application is complete. We will discuss the acceptance of this proposed project.
There's no new information forthcoming from the developers?
We're going to bring them forward as soon as we accept it. Do we, do we accept it first, and then let bring them to explain it, and then open up the public hearing?
We can, we can technically proceed to accept right now, but I'm offering a question as to whether there's any new information that succeeds the staff report that...
That Miriam would not be apprised of.
Right.
Okay. Well, before we move on acceptance, then I will ask the applicant, if there's anything new that we should know since the last time you were here for the conceptual?
No.
Nothing, okay. Then, that's all we need to know. You can remain here while the board, if they choose to discuss anything, then I don't see much need for it. I'm going to look for a motion on accepting the application, and then we can get right into this. Okay, we have a motion to accept this application as complete, seconded by, made by Mr. Hall, seconded by Mr. Kelly. All those in favor of accepting this application, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous, okay. We're going to invite Mr. Quentin Blaine forward, and ask what you have in mind. And after you do this, we'll open a public hearing.
Okay, we have the plans in, in front of you. What we have is, Miriam gave you some numbers. Those were really the footprint numbers, I believe, that you gave.
I'm sorry, that's correct.
Okay. So it's, you know, currently, the, it will go from approximately 4,500 square-foot building to approximately a 9,000 square-foot building. There's a 2,238 square foot footprint. That'll be two stories on the new park. The site's already used as a, as for the fellowship, as a church. We have existing parking in the front, we have existing parking in the rear, and we have existing parking across Morgan Drive on part of the circle there as well, and that's a lot that's attached to the church. For additional parking at some point, we do want to increase the parking. We have a proposed future parking. We're not doing it right now, we're concerned about the, the money piece of the whole business. What the town planner, Miriam, has asked the board to do, we think is very reasonable, is that at the time, before we even clear it, we would come to the town, we would escrow some money, we would, that the town felt to pay their own engineer, we would hire the engineer, do the drainage calculations, and then give those to the town, and at that point, we'll discuss it, if there's any discussion. That's a reasonable requirement. In fact, I turned these around, so I, I'm not just the only one looking at it. The, the lighting is, if you'll notice on pages two and three, we only expect to have...
Did you get this one? We have a foot print over it. Wait, so we get great access. There you go. And I want to know what it's completely...
Pages two and three, lighting was, was an issue, and we have only four pieces of lighting on the building, and each one of them is labeled as it will be a light fixture dark sky compliant. One is near the entrance, the additional entrance at the front of the building, and the, a, where am I here? That's the, that's the back, one along the back, and then, actually, one along the side of the building, and then there'll be two along the back, because there would be, as you can see on page one, there's just a walkway around the back of the building up to a main door. So that's the only additional lighting that we propose. The siding will be consistent with what we have now. It'll be different somewhat, there's some different materials. Part of what we're trying to do is to be conscious of the building materials we use, and make sure it's, as well as being energy-efficient, uses materials wisely. So we're, we have a wavy lap siding, we're going to a straight lap siding with a composition board. It's going to look very similar, but it's not exact, we're not going to do the same thing. And our architect, Stu White, this is what his recommendation is for the look of the outside, and we, we think it will look, look good. I think the building out there now looks good, we're very proud of what we have there, and there's a lot of candy work there. So what we're going to be doing is adding on the... candy work there. So what we're going to be doing is adding on the bottom floor, we will be adding religious education space, some storage, and space for the religious education administrator, and we'll be moving some other spaces around in there. On the top floor, we will be expanding our, the sanctuary. We'll be adding, we'll be adding a kitchen space to the back and moving our kitchen over to be a much larger kitchen space. We'll be adding a meeting room and we'll have a couple of other rooms in here as well. So that's the use of the space. We're pretty well full up on a lot of Sundays and we need the extra room.
We have a question here from Mr. Scarborough.
Mr. Chairman, I would ask only along the backside of this proposal, there are very few lights and we need to consider safety of individuals who are moving back and forth in that area that may require additional lighting or ask for additional lighting.
Well, the, the foot traffic would be where, they're, they're downcasting lights on their path and their, and their exits. The parking lot, I think, you know, that's, that's where we begin, you know, to work against our own best interest if we're going to have the parking lot lighted. Then, then we're going away from minimal lighting that we like on the dark skies. So, I mean, I wouldn't, for one, want to see a lighted parking lot. Well, and I'm, I'm only proposing and it's up to the board.
You're fine. May I, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, correct. This walking path here, this isn't a main entrance. There is a doorway here. And so that's why we're including some lighting to walk around this. The entrances still will be from the back. The entrance, the main entrance will be here and the front is here. And we do have another front entrance that will go in and be closed from the kitchen, but that also has a light. So this, this will be a path that will be used on occasion, but not on a regular basis. So it has two lights. There'll be a light here, a light here, and a light here.
Just to satisfy Mr. Scarborough, you do have functions there in the evening.
Right.
And when the parking lot, the lower parking lot, as we'll call it, is used, I would assume there would be some consideration for people making their way from that parking lot to the building.
But we, we also have some other light on the existing building. If this is the additional lighting that we would be adding. So as it's used now, we do have some lighting on the building here. We're not changing that. Okay?
Mr. Kelly, you had a question?
Yeah, it is just a question. You said that you almost doubled the space on the church.
Yes, I did.
Okay. It just, because of my ignorance, but it, it looks like the addition on the front is one story and, and then it only goes just to a point. And I just can't quite understand how, how it can be doubled. If the front, if the front is only one story and the back is two stories, is that the same on the original church? So one floor on the one story on, on the, on the original building in front and then two stories in back?
Yeah, clarify.
Right there.
Basically, what it is, is the, the near Fairgrounds Row, the building, the side of the building is where the steep slope is.
Yeah, right.
So although it looks pretty much like a one-story building, it's actually two. And the front, the very front second story is completely underground and it quickly opens up along the side.
Yeah, I was just saying, missed that here. That's all. That doesn't look like it's...
Can I come around so I can...
Okay, you next one, Mr. [inaudible].
No, this will be, this is, this is still space under here. It's just underground.
Okay, this doesn't mean...
Right. Well, potentially this does. Where, where Mr. Kelly is talking, if we ended, that's a storage space now. If we ended up without sufficient funding to add that square footage, we would use a slab under this piece here.
Yeah, right.
So, so you are, this is, this part of this is actually in question right at the front, whether we actually do the entire 2,0238.
I could probably wonder whether I would give my eye...
No, no. But it really is. It, it slopes so fast that, that it is a full two-story on the main church. Rhonda?
Yeah, I just have a question in regards to the parking, the existing parking.
Yes.
If you add this, this other facility or addition on, and that's going to allow you more, obviously more people, is it, is your existing parking going to cover what's this addition's going to be used? Because it's, I don't know whether it's, if it's mandated for you to do the, the proposed addition. At least you said you wanted to wait for that.
I think, I think your overview stated that they're requiring, they're, would require 33 and they have 36 in the plan.
Correct.
For the addition.
Yeah, the seating of the capacity of the church with the addition is, is, will be 191 seats. And, and that requires 32 parking spaces. And right now, they have 37 existing. And then they were talking about adding an additional 37, but that's above and beyond what they require. They need their requirement for the addition.
Mayor's on for... Yes, please. The other thing is that, you know, we'll build it and we hope, we hope they will come, but that will take some time as well.
Right.
So, you know, that's why this is phased in a little bit. We will need some additional parking, we believe. And that's why we have phased it in, but we don't have it part of the initial plan in an effort to do it in a cost-effective manner.
Brett, you had a question?
On the parking, yeah, the second lot, the 3724, it's listed. Is there an agreement with that for those 13 spaces? Or is that a gentleman's agreement at this point?
We own it.
Oh, you own it?
The church owns it.
Yes.
The best kind of agreement. You own it.
That's right.
Now, Miriam, you referenced us putting a condition relative to a drainage study on the parking, but that's, that's the proposed...
The proposed.
Expansion, sorry, down the screen.
Right. The proposed expansion. And, and they're just not sure when they're even going to do that. So, so that's why I wanted to tie it together, not say they need a drainage study today, but just, you know, prior to them clearing, that at that point, they need a drainage study. And the reason why is if you look at the drainage swells...
Yeah.
And then there's a low spot there. And, and so the engineer was, was concerned of, this is currently where the water goes. So if they change it and flatten it, where would that water go?
And we discussed that it would be a gravel parking lot and they would put stops in rather than, that would be how it would be delineated. And you had mentioned during your conceptual that you're, you don't have a final number from the architect and your fundraising isn't complete. But this is the plan that you would like to be approved on, in case all the decks line up and you're ready to go. Okay.
Yeah. And actually, the status of the project is we expect to be looking at final construction drawings next Monday, having to go up a bid. If the number comes back within our budget, we would go forward this spring. That's our plan. So we hope to, so we'll lose the economy too if we get the right numbers.
Further discussion before I open the public hearing?
Just one question. Is there any intent to have a daycare or before and after type school accommodation in this facility?
We before rented it out to the Montessori school. There are lots of things we would like to do that could be useful to the community with this building, but we have no present plans for any such thing. One would include an after-school program that that could be useful to children, the children in the neighborhood. But that's, that's only at an idea stage and not a planned use right now.
Jack, that brings back, thank you, Bill. Me, to my point about lighting, one of
those accessory paths and safety. I think two, three sets of lights along those back paths are not adequate and would suggest that they may add more.
Just a clarification, if I may.
Go ahead, go.
I presume that you're referring really to sheet A302 and a long wall on the backside?
Yes.
So they have two lights on the extremity of that wall?
That's correct.
And you're, I guess, intimating that you would like to see another light maybe in the middle of that wall?
That's correct.
When you look at the, the dispersal, dispersal range of that lighting that you do have, I think that Jack is making a valid point. And in terms of...
They have gaposis of light.
If you're gonna, if you're gonna need the light, you better provide for the light. And there's no better time than at the time of new construction.
Yeah. Do you see what he's talking about?
I, I do.
I think it makes sense, Brett.
Yeah, and that...
Right there.
And quite frankly, the lights were, yeah, we could, that's not unreasonable.
I presume you've got something over here already.
Yeah. Are we looking at the back? Yes, we do. Yeah. Yeah, we have a couple, we have a couple of lights here.
So it's Bill and Jack here.
Yeah, adding a third light. I mean, I think that's, we're trying to keep it as, as dark as we can.
We like dark.
But...
But we like safety as well.
Adding, adding a light is not, is something that we...
Certainly, I'm responding to an emergency in that building. I would like to be able to see where the heck I'm going.
Yeah, it's a reasonable thing.
Yeah, your point was well taken and they're going to, yes, John.
Question. If he go, has a daycare center or something like that, does he have to come back to the board for that?
How would you be, be a ZBA at him, wouldn't it?
Well, I would really prefer him to come back if it's...
Now, we've, see, we, we just did the Methodist church and they were quite upfront about trying to get a daycare operator in there. And we knew about it upfront. He said there's no current plan for that. If they do change their mind, we would like you to come back and, and tell us so we make sure the safety issues in the parking and the traffic are...
And also gives us a sense of scale. I mean, if it's one teacher versus 20 teachers or, you know, I, at least with the other church, we had the sense of scale. It was one teacher and six kids or whatever it was. Versus, you know, you've got a lot of buildings. So it's a different kind of...
It would be a scope thing. We would like to know what the scope of any activity would be that causes, have concerns about safety and facility and utility.
Right. I would assume, I mean, they're...
Nothing on the table now.
We have nothing on the table. And would that be if there was an economic, I mean, it is a church, so we, we use it for a lot of different activities, including young people there at different times. I would assume something that was, that we were trying to generate income. Is that what we're looking at, like a daycare or?
Not necessarily. It has to do more with the, the frequency of use. When, when you do a church, you know, it's, it's Sundays, maybe a couple of times during the week. When it's a church you're setting, I mean, a school, you're setting it up, it's eight to five. There's, there's a different kind of traffic pattern. They come in, they come out, and the scale. So when you look at changing from a church use to a full daycare or a school, then we need to know. I'm not talking about, you know, you have like a little babysitting service while the service is going on. That's perfectly fine. But when it goes to a, to a school.
Okay. And, yes, Bill?
Again, a daycare, a before and after school, those things are usually licensed by the state and they usually trigger other local safety inspections by fire, in particular, fire safety. And in that sense, it does come back to the town for consideration of that issue. But in, in terms of our consideration, it isn't a major impact so long as you've got the area to accommodate whatever additional parking might be related to that. And that wouldn't seem to be a problem based on what's in front of us.
Yeah. And I guess what I can say about the use, we did have a Montessori school that was rented downstairs. And at a time that, that seemed to work for both parties, they, they closed and we, and we took it back and we really wanted the space back. So we don't intend to, we intend to use it for the church purposes, but they are very varied. It may be that we try to have some after, kids come in after school and, and because we think we can be helpful there. You know, we, we, there'll be a lot of different activities here, but I don't think that anything is a, such as the Montessori school is planned to be in there because we used the building quite a few, quite a few days and we actually determined that varies.
Rhonda, you got a question?
Um, yeah, and I just forgot. I just forgot. Oh, yeah. Is churches exempt to stuff like what Bill was just brought up? Are they exempt from some things like that if they're having a little Sunday school or school?
It depends on the scale and how it's managed. If it's a nonprofit activity related to the church, it's exempt. If it's a commercial venture that is under a lease agreement, then it takes on a different character.
And they're not exempt from public safety requirements. They're exempt from a lot of other permitting issues. If there are no further questions from Mr. Blaine, I'll open the public hearing. I'll open the public hearing on the Star King Unitarian Church addition at 7:35 PM. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of this application, please identify yourself. Yes, Pam?
I'm Carol Essies and I'm a member of Star King. And we ran the capital campaign for what we're trying to accomplish. The growth of the church, while small, is certainly phenomenal in regards to our children. As it stands right now, when we have fellowship hour after our service, there is hardly enough room, which lends the requirement that we do something quickly. We have strived to raise money. We have all made a three-year commitment, which we have gone back to the fellowship in charge, but we're looking at such horrible financial conditions to say, is this something we really can do? Three people out of 130 said I need to change it. Everybody else is willing to make whatever sacrifices are necessary because of the worthiness of this project. I'm grateful to Mr. Blaine because of the fact that he was willing to take this on for the church. We are looking for bids. We are hoping sincerely that by fall, we will not be as cramped as we are now. And that's one of the reasons why at 15 below zero, we're trying to start. But I would ask you to please prove it because it means a great deal, not just to us, but to the community with the things that we're doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Carol. Would anybody else like to speak? Yes, Brian.
Mr. Chairman, pardon me, to touch on a few points that were raised just prior to the public hearing, as far as licensing by the state, it is regulated. Being exempt does not mean it's purely for a tax thing. So the permits for assembly, which are issued by the local fire department, all of the parameters that the state sets around daycare and uses of that type, all have to be followed and they are followed up by the state. I've been in a few of them with Tom Morrison of the fire department. So that is something that will, if and when it comes up, everybody's aware. I mean, you know, and it's looked at by a number of people. So that, that goes to assembly. And basically, it, it's about how many people you have there at any given time and what they're doing is the level of scrutiny by the state and by the locals. And that goes also to parking because the toddlers do not drive cars. They're picked up. So, you know, there would be just a momentary amount of parking use while the child is escorted to the car and off they go. They wouldn't be there for, say, they would during a church service, for example. So essentially, the number of cars would not increase. They would just be moved around a little bit more. That's bringing the check.
Okay. Further comments? Anybody opposed to this application? Okay. Any general comments?
None.
Okay. I'm going to close the public hearing at 7:38 PM. Bring you back to the board for discussion and move it to a vote here. Any, any further thoughts? While we have, when we take a vote on approval, we do have some restrictions, conditions that have been proposed by the plan. Would you want to review those with us again? We're getting close to moving us towards a vote.
I would say approval with the acceptance of the state, federal, I'm sorry, the... I would say approval with the acceptance of the state, federal, I'm sorry, the federal, state, and local approvals, that would be one condition. Condition two would be, prior to clearing in our construction of the proposed parking lot, that drainage calculations are submitted, and at the same time, engineering escrow account is set up. And then, you know, and I'm thinking of adding a third condition, that prior to renting it out to a private school, or making arrangements with a private school, that that would be come back for review.
If other, if that's reasonable, under the, if that's what the law says, then we would do that.
Right, because it's, you know, a church is, is one thing, when you have people parking. But when it goes into a childcare center, and it's private, then again, I, it'd be helpful to know how many teachers, what, if it's adequate for dropping off the toddlers, and what that arrangement is, because it's a different traffic pattern.
Yeah, we have no, no, actually, no present plans to rent out the building for any longer use, so...
Prior to...
With him going on record, that there are no plans to rent out, I would be reluctant to put a third condition on it.
I would just say prior, you know, prior to, if they had those plans, and they'd remember to come back for us, so that it's not, someone forgets.
Actually, what I, I think that we would, you know, as with anything, if it was a change in use, we would have to come back.
Correct, correct.
The church, and so I think that's...
I think we're covered on, we're covered on.
Under the law, and I don't know how we would want to massage it.
But just so much to the awareness that...
Change in use would force you back into the process. Yes, John?
I think, too, that you might be getting close to losing your nonprofit status if you, if you've got too much inter-commercial activity and not, not nonprofit activity. So I think that would stop anything that Miriam might be worried about, about change into a school or something like that. So I think it could affect that one, too.
All right, continuing, so is it with two conditions that we're, we're going to be...
So just our standard condition of, you know, having a federal, state approval. And then, two, prior to the proposed parking area, they submit the drainage calculations and engineering escrow.
Okay. If there's no further discussion, I'd like someone to frame a motion that encompasses those conditions. Phil, you're very good at this.
I'm old, and we approve the plan that Mr. President presented to us by the Star King Unitarian for expansion of their church facility, with the conditions that they obtain whatever state or federal approvals may be required in conjunction with that construction, that they provide an engineering escrow account for our town engineer to provide oversight...
Prior to clearing.
Prior to any expansion of their parking facilities, when the time comes, if they should want to do that. And that three, that a drainage study will be initiated when that request may be forthcoming.
Okay, so you combined her two into a two and a three. So we have one, two, and three, okay. So you've heard, you've heard the motion. Do I have a second on that? Motion made by Mr. Cool, seconded by Rhonda Bishop, with three conditions. The record will show them. All those in favor of approval of this application signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Thank you very much, good luck. May your fundraising be blessed, and may it continue to flourish.
Thank you very much, I appreciate your help.
Okay. Item number eight on our agenda is other business. If anyone on the board has other business that would like to bring forward, seeing none. We will go to item nine on our agenda, which is our public comment. No public comment? So that brings us to item 10, our famous adjournment. I'm looking for a motion adjournment, so moved by Mr. Scarborough, seconded by Mr. Scott. Be adjourned at 7:43 PM. Thank you. Good job.